The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA VII or Spectrum.
Welcome, everybody, to this special board meeting for November 28, 2022. I just want to welcome everybody here. We're going to first do the roll call. Kinsey? Smith?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
McCoy, here. Leighton and Warren?
Here.
Welch, here. Lyerly?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Okay, all, we have five board members present in the room and two are joining us remotely. And we're going, and we're joined tonight by Mr. Joe Porto, Todd Binacki, Sheila Harrison from BWP, which is the company that we hired to facilitate our superintendent's search. So we're going to get started with that. We have a lot to kind of work through as a board. This will be our first time that we're kind of as a board in our entirety to talk about the timeline and all the things that are going to have to happen leading up to this hire. And I'm sorry, I neglected to mention Ms. Sandy Heller is joining us for this process. A lot of you in this room know Sandy because Sandy was with our district for many, many years and has a lot of experience with these superintendent searches. So we've, she's come back to us for a few months to help us and we're very, very grateful to have her. So with that, I think we'll get started. I think I've done all the preliminary stuff here. So why don't you guys go ahead and take it away?
Okay. I think we'll start by introducing ourselves again and then we'll jump right in. I'm Dr. Joe Porto. I'm a partner with BWP and Associates, our, the search firm. And I'm a former superintendent. I was a superintendent for 16 years. I had a 33-year career in education. And since then, I've been a partner with BWP. I'm here with my associate Todd. I'll let him introduce himself. And then we have Sheila remotely.
Thanks, Joe. I got to remember the button technique here from last time.
Yeah, it's just a thing and we all deal with it. So.
It's all good. Yeah. Hello, my name is Todd Binacki and as Joe said, I'm an associate here with BWP, retired superintendent from Cedarburg, 35 years in education here in the state of Wisconsin. And a pleasure to be working on this search with the Green Bay school board.
Sheila, why don't you introduce yourself as well?
Will do. Hello, Eric, again, everyone. I'm Sheila Harrison-Williams. I too am a partner and director for BWP. Been with the company since 2012. I am a retired superintendent out of Illinois. Retired three years ago and since that time, I've been the executive director for the Arizona School Boards Association. And that's where I am now. And again, just like the gentleman said, we are elated to have this opportunity to work with you to find your next superintendent of schools for Green Bay.
So first thing I wanted to say, thank you for setting it up this way for us, having a special meeting in advance of an already busy meeting for yourselves. School boards often just tack us on their regular meeting and it's not, it's conducive as this is, and I just appreciate the way you structured that made it easier for us. We have really one goal today. We want to take you slowly through the timeline for the entire search from beginning to end. And we have a second purpose in mind. We also have some spots during the process where we need your input. And we need to make some decisions together tonight because this is a collaborative process. So we will do a review of the process and make some decisions and we'll take you through that. And hopefully, when we leave, you have a very clear idea of what's going to happen. And we have all the input we need to make it go as well as can be.
Can I just make sure that everyone has a copy of the search timeline and tasks? Does everyone have that? And has access to it?
This is what I'm going to be working off of. And my colleagues have elected me to be our main spokesperson. So we're not going back and forth between speakers and, but they're going to jump in where they need to.
James and Andrew, do you have access to this document?
We do. I do.
Andrew? Andrew?
Unmute. Okay.
You got, do you have?
Was it emailed?
Yes.
Yes. It was an attachment?
I'm sure I have it if it's emailed. Oh, yeah, I'm sure I'm fine.
Hang on just a second.
I got it. Yep, I have it.
You got it? Okay, very good. Thank you. I think we're set.
Great. So we've, it always makes me feel good to check off a couple of things already. So we have the first two signed off. We've already taken care of the contract, the letter of understanding, and tonight we're having our planning meeting. So off we go. The applications are up and live now and that started right away. And we're going to keep the applications open till January 30th. So we have a nice, long chunk of time to do our recruitment. Right now, our, the application, the vacancy is on the BWP website. Actually, we get a lot of traffic nationwide on the BWP website. And I'm pleased to report, we already have four people have applied. So that's just a real nice way to start. So one of the first decisions we have to make is the fourth item down the line here. And that's where you want us to post and how deep do you want us to go? So the BWP website is free, obviously. We will, after tonight's meeting, we will take the vacancy notice and we will post it on WASDA, which is the statewide superintendents association and the WASB website, which is the school board association. I believe you're members of both, so it would be my understanding that there should be no cost for those two. And so we'll be totally covered with Wisconsin by doing those two. When we came and did our pitch, you kind of alluded to the fact that you were hoping to do a national search, have as wide of a net as can be. And so there's a couple of possibilities for national recruitment. One is the AASA website. That's the National Superintendent's Association website. There is a cost to these ones I'm about to go through. Most of them are between $250 and $500. It's a, in my opinion, one of the best bang-for-the-buck investments in this process. Your proposal, when you asked us to send in our ideas, was, had a big, significant emphasis on making sure that we not only recruited nationwide, but that we made sure that all groups were represented. And you know, issues of making sure that we had a diverse candidate pool seemed important. So we're going to recommend the NABSE, which is the African-American Superintendent's Association. And we can also advertise in the ALAS, which is the Hispanic Administrators Association. So if you were to do all of those, I think it would be about $1,500 for the advertisement. And we would work with you and your team to set up the Wisconsin ones. And my folks in BWP would help set up those national ones. What are your thoughts as far as your recruiting and advertising?
What are the parameters on that as far as time? Then would we, would you keep the, like, on those three additional groups? So about $1,500? What would be the dates then? Like, when, when could you start those and when would they be? They would obviously be done on January 30th, but for their publication purposes.
Sheila, you're a member of NABSE. I don't know how long when you take out an ad, do you know how long?
And I think you can do it monthly, but if you're, if you know, but I think you have options. And I think it's with the other ones as well, ALAS and AASA. I think it's the same with all of them. You have options. It's whatever you'd like. If you want to keep it open the entire time that we're open or just 30 days to get that word out. And then remember, we're out there as well, attending these conferences. For example, I will actually be attending the NAPSE conference, the Nationalized Black School Educators Conference in Washington DC on Wednesday. I go out there on Wednesday. So I will be out there personally doing recruitment and talking to superintendents and such as well as AASA. And I believe Joe is also going to attend that conference. So we're going to be out there and we have a local ALAS right here in Arizona. And that they have a conference as well. So we plan to do that personal touch. But I believe, you know, advertising with these organizations would be helpful and beneficial to us, to discern.
Laura, we would not need to post more than a month and we might vary it. So one, one month, one the next. So that it's within our period of offering the position.
So the 1,500 would be one month for each of these entities? Okay. If we wanted to go two months though, would it be double that?
If we thought we were getting a good result or feeling like we needed to go longer, I'd come back to you and say, could we, could we go another month and I'd give you the price?
Okay, but it would be additional.
It would be additional.
Brian?
I assume that you've seen traffic from these sites before for other searches that. I assume that you've seen traffic, like you can trace where you've had hits from these different websites for other searches that you've done. And how often, how long do they usually stay? And how long have other people advertised with it? And what type of results have you seen from these sites compared to your other networking opportunities?
No other district that I've done a search for has needed to do it more than a month. So I do feel that the 30 days will be plenty to get the word out and the attention that we need. I don't have exact numbers. I wish I could tell you, you know, we've found this many candidates off of these sites. But we, we get a good number of them. That's the first place a lot of them look. And we've been recommending these two entities a lot more lately because my colleagues are getting good results as well.
Could you get back to us with the numbers of just roughly how many you've seen from similar districts, similar to our size and demographics from the sites?
Also, is there any benefit from doing this? If we, if we sign off on this tonight, doing this in December as opposed to January?
Oh, yes. I don't think we'll start anything as far as the national recruitment till January. We'll get our biggest focus and hits on it after the new year.
Okay.
And yes, be happy to. We'll be giving it monthly or even every two weeks kind of reports back to you and I'll shoot those to Laura. And I could actually, you know, find out how many people we're getting from those sites and give you updates along the way.
Also, just curious as far as other districts, our sizes that have had that, so in your past with it.
Fine. Definitely will do. So I'm hearing that it's okay to do this full-blown national sites, these three extras for extra costs will be.
Let me just ask, does everyone, I mean, consensus-wise, oh, go ahead.
It won't be more than 1,500 because you said it's 250 to 500 for each. So, yeah.
So do we, we have at least an agreement. James and Andrew, do you feel like we should spend an additional amount for these three separate groups?
Well, I have a question, Laura.
Sure.
The proposal that you put in front of us had a base fee and then it had several options. Can you remind me, I believe that this national search was one of the disclosed increases in cost that we considered when voting on you as our consultants. Can you confirm that that was part of the proposal?
Yes, we, we gave you the base proposal and then we gave you our best estimates of all additional costs. And this was.
In addition to, this is just part, we're selecting part of that, those options, correct?
No, this was one of the things listed that would be an additional cost.
Correct. But it was in the proposal, right?
Yes, it was.
We looked at it. We knew that there was a $35,000 base and then we all kind of added up where it could end up being, I'm just making sure that this is not in addition to those additional choices.
No, got it. I understand your question now and I can confirm, yes.
Yeah. So I'm okay. And I would agree to a national search.
Okay. Brian?
I have a question for Melissa with this. This, would we need to vote on each part or is this part of the general contract up to a certain amount?
Thanks for the question, Brian. So we have drafted the contract and it's been signed. The contract includes the base that you agreed to pay and then as consistent with the proposal and consistent with the contract, if you agree to advertise in these places, this will be the additional cost. So I don't, I don't think you need to vote on this. I think you just need to give a general consensus and direction to Laura as to whether you want this, these posted.
Then if it, there's not necessarily a cap on our motion with it, it would be to the discretion of the board. If we saw it starting to add up, we could decide as a board that we've, we've hit that limit.
I think as they've explained and the ongoing communication has been great. And so having that ongoing communication with Laura and then Laura can bring that back to the board.
I'm not concerned about this at all. I just mostly just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page and that we're in agreement in spending this additional money. So it sounds like we are. So go ahead.
I'm on the same, I'm on the same page too.
Oh, okay.
And I'm not worried, and I'm not even a little bit worried that in reality, we're going to get a surprise bill for $2,200 or anything like that because we're not. But I do, I do want to make sure we're doing it, you know, technically correct. So Melissa is the, I mean, can we say that just the meeting record is clear that we're discussing up to and not over 1,500 for the, these add-ons and that a vote is therefore not needed? And if, again, I'm worried about getting it technically correct. I'm not worried about getting a surprise bill for the wrong amount.
Well, this, this, this conversation will be in the minutes. I mean, we are recording this discussion and our agreement to it.
Yeah. I mean, does it, I guess my question legally, does it, you know, legally does head nodding around the table count? I mean, that's, you know, is it official? Is it official enough for a relatively small modification like this?
So we're not posted for action. We can reflect in the minutes that Laura has the authority to spend 1,500, up to $1,500. And anything in addition to $1,500, she'll come back for discussion with the board.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. I forgot to say hi when I came in. Didn't see you there. Okay to proceed?
Yes, please.
All right. So the early part of the process is all about working toward development of what we call the leadership profile. The leadership profile, no exaggeration, becomes the key focal point of the entire search. It's the definition of the, all of the characteristics and leadership qualities that are unique for being successful in Green Bay. And so we developed the leadership profile. We come at it three ways. And we end up combining and through synthesis, creating this profile. So phase one, prong one of the process is to conduct the survey. The survey is a pretty standard template that we've used around the country. But it is able to be adapted and modified and we've had districts want us to add a couple of things. We've had district ask us to take off a couple of things and we, we can easily do that. I know some of you have some questions about the survey already and I think that's great. I am going to ask if it's okay though, if we can go through the whole process and make all our key decisions. And then let's come back to the survey itself and then we can pick at it and do whatever we want. But I'd like to make sure we got through, we get through all of that. So anyone who came with survey issues didn't want you to think we're just pushing you aside. The survey, we will work with your tech person. The survey will go up on the, your website. So people are used to, already used to visiting your website. It's a really nice site, by the way, too. So I think we'll get some good play. Where we need your help is getting the word out. And we are going to invite students to take the survey, parents to take the survey, of course, staff, support staff, certified staff and community members. In the survey, you identify which group you were in and off you go. The survey, like the focus groups, are going to all revolve around three basic issues. The things that people feel most positive about, Green Bay Public Schools, Green Bay area. The things that would be ripe for growth and improvement. And then the characteristics that you think would be the most successful match for your schools and your community. We ask those three questions. I like to stress from the very beginning though, that the reason for this survey is not to do an audit of your district. It's not to dig deep into your strengths and weaknesses, that kind of thing. There's other companies that do that and it's usually part of strategic planning and it's well worth doing. But we're, ours isn't about that. Ours is really about taking a snapshot in time right now, get people's perceptions. Because Todd and I and Sheila are going to be talking to people and recruiting people. And the best way to recruit people is to be able to say, here's what they got going on, lots of good things. Well, Joe, Todd, what, yeah, that's great, but what's on the horizon? Well, here's a couple of things on the horizon. And then the leadership profile, we, we won't even talk to some of our contacts if we don't think that the match is there. So the purpose of the survey is to get information for recruiting. It's not for doing a deep dive into your strengths and weaknesses. I like to say that because sometimes the survey gets misunderstood as the process proceeds. Okay? In talking to Laura about a week ago and Sandy and Kinsey, we, we kind of brainstormed. And normally, we don't need too long of a period to do the survey. We normally do it concurrently with when we come into the district and conduct the focus groups. But I, they had a really good idea that is there anything wrong if we start the survey in December? So people know that we're focused on this. This is, the process has started. We're excited. We're into it, you know, let's, let's get at this. Whereas if we waited till January, there might be some thoughts. So I thought that was a great suggestion. So we're recommending that we open things up on the ninth. I've already talked to our person and she says, Joe, all I need is the tech person who to contact. So she's all set to go and we'll run that through January 13th. So that's going to be plenty of time. And then Laura, I'm going to leave it to you and your team as far as the promotion and, you know, normally the only advice we'd give, you know this already, hit them with every available thing you have from newsletters to your Twitter account, you know, however you best communicate.
We have quite a lot in place that will help facilitate that through Lori Blakesley, our communications director. We've done surveys before and our district is quite experienced at that.
Good. Good. When the survey is finished, literally, our person, Mary Ann presses a button and boom, it's just beautiful results and charts and all of that good stuff. We are totally transparent throughout this entire process. So we will be giving you the survey results as part of the leadership report when we come back and present. And then we encourage you to put the results right up on your website. So the whole community can take a look and see how that turned out. So that's phase one of building a leadership profile. Phase two is coming into the district and talking to people. We call them focus groups, however, whatever you want to call them. But while you could say, well, can't everybody just do a survey? Why do you have to do that? But Todd and I and Sheila will tell you, there's nothing like talking to people. We get a little bit deeper, richer conversations and we get some good context. We always hear about your history, pro and con, but those are the things that really help us when we're recruiting. So we are going to come in with a five-person team. Four of us will be here in the district on the ground and Sheila is going to be our virtual person. We've already talked to Kinsey. She's already mapped out how this day might work. But what we're going to try to do is give choices. We, we would like to have people actually come in and Laura suggested we stay in one location and, and people come here. So we would like to have the administrators, principals, administrators, central office. We'd like to have teams of teachers be able to talk to us, the union leadership in the district, the support staff. So their voices are heard, parent leaders, maybe PTA presidents and the like, community leaders and local politicians. And students as well, we would like to get in and be able to talk to. And we'd like to give people choices. You know, maybe we'll have a teacher group after school. But lots of teachers have to go home, pick up their kids, you know, all of that, but they want to still participate. So we'd like to be able to offer virtual, same with parents. Some people like to come in the district, talk eye to eye. Others can't make it, busy home lives, but they'd like to contribute. So what we're working on as we speak is Jan, did we decide on the 10th or the 11th? Kinsey, 10th. So we're focusing on January 10th. We think we can do it all in one day, but we will reserve the 11th in case any groups don't get in or we feel that we didn't get a chance to talk to everyone. We'll have Sheila working on the virtual and I'm going to have probably one other person helping her on the virtual end. And then four of us will be here and we can cover a lot of ground. For instance, I remember Laura, you said the administrators are going to be here for a meeting. Well, there's a lot of administrators. You have a big district, but when we divide it up between the four of us, we could have real nice groups and have a good conversation.
Kinsey's done a fabulous job of doing kind of a draft schedule for the day. And the only reason I, I asked her to please reserve the next day as well because it's January and you don't know what the weather's going to be.
Right. And. That'll be the snow day.
Yeah, it would be really awful to have to try to cobble together something else on, on another day. So we're going to keep it that way. So we're going to keep it that way for now. And I know this is, this is just a draft. And I know she spent a lot of time on this, I just really, really appreciate that. But we're well on the way to, to scheduling that date and covering all the groups that need to be heard.
Again.
Go ahead, Brian.
One second, if I can, just while I'm on that thought. Go ahead, I lost my thought, I lost my thought.
So can we get that draft shared with us also, just so we can see it? And is there consideration for different work schedules for different community members? And any language requirements that, if we're reaching out to different populations and communities on there?
I, I know we talked about interpreters. I can't remember what conclusion we came to.
I forgot to mention that the surveys are all easily done in different languages. We've provided multiple languages in many districts. So all of your community members will have access to the survey. We could set up, if the district has the resources, to have a meeting or two with interpreters. But during our pre-meeting, Laura wisely asked, you know, how has that gone in other districts? And usually it's so poorly attended that it's just not worth, you know, having the people come out. But every community is different. You might have a more active community that wants an in-person experience. So we'll be happy to, to do it if you guys feel that that's necessary.
Okay, Brian?
Also, as far as timing for different work schedules, that is something that's being taken into consideration as well with it.
That's why we're going to have the virtual options as well. For a lot of these groups, there'll be two, two ways to participate. Either in person and per the schedule or virtual.
Okay, and we can do outreach as far as hopefully reaching out to our communities that maybe in other districts haven't been as successful, but that's part of our plan as well, I assume, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And also wanted to add the community open forums, they're usually done later in the day. I think that's what he was referring to, those that work that may want to participate.
Kind of, I mean, shift work. So the shift work aspect of it is also having it open to people that are working second or third shift, if there's a time earlier in the morning as well with it, so.
Our team hasn't had a chance to look at Kinsey's work.
Yeah, it's very, it's very, it's like just happened, so.
What I told her was the three of us would look at it. And since we've got a lot of experience and we know what works and what doesn't, we'll probably tweak it such. And so after we've had a shot at that, then why don't you shoot that out to your colleagues?
Okay, that'd be good. All right.
I just want to say, I agree with Brian. I, I think that having options for people who want to attend in person is important. I don't, I, I mean, there is some fair or unfair, there's some sense that to attend, some people feel it's, you know, worth, worth more to, to show up in person. And so I think we need to have a variety of times included on those days. I think virtual might be right, but I don't want people with, you know, because they can't do, because they could only do a morning, therefore it would have to be virtual. I would not want to see that happen. I like to see within reason, you know, different choices of times available for groups.
All right. Can I ask a question, Laura? Yes. Brian and Andrew, what groups specifically would you want multiple times for, for that shift work type of thing? Would it be parents and the community?
I mean, that's what I was, that was my thought is that it would, I think the, there's more, little bit more option to have people do things. At least some of these groups who work for the district do things, you know, within work time. But I was thinking of the, you know, parenting community mostly.
Go ahead, Brian.
And I don't know the logistics of it as far as being able to change location. While I understand the reasoning for hosting it here. You know, in education, there's times where families are nervous coming in to buildings with it of, if there's a spot that we can meet, whether it's at the CROC Center or one of the community centers or something that's not necessarily one of our buildings or the district office building where, you know, families sometimes are nervous coming into schools. And those are the voices we definitely want to make sure we hear. So reaching out to one of our community partners or someplace in the area with it.
I think Lori, weren't you thinking that this would be one of the central locations or were you thinking somewhere else?
Yeah, but I think you're, you're including this building in your, your concerns, yeah. So I, I think your point is important in that, yes, we do have families who do not feel comfortable coming into schools, including DOB, our, our district office building. Let's think about that.
We'll go wherever you tell us to go. We are used to, you know, heading the people on the, the ground that day. We're used to heading off in different locations if we need to.
The fact that there's four of you, maybe, yeah, let's, let's, let's think on that a little bit more and see if we can expand that. Expand our thinking on that a little bit. Is that, that is a genuine dynamic that we need to think about. So go ahead, Laura.
Just building on that, I was going to recommend that, I know I, if I know in advance, I could be available, but to greet them at the door and walk them to the place, you know, something like that to help them feel more comfortable rather than walk, wandering around the building.
Well, this is a, so one of the things that we talked about in our pre-meeting was the fact that school board members should not partake in these meetings because it can be, have a, I don't know, you, you had a, a much better explanation about why board members need to kind of keep their distance a bit.
We are going to meet with each board member for a private interview. So of course, board member input is critical. But we do ask that you let the, these meetings be of just those groups because you really want people to be honest. And there are people that might feel uncomfortable, even though your intentions would be totally positive. And you don't want that, you want to be able to, to know that people felt comfortable. So that's why we give you your own interview and we ask that these be just for those groups.
Not to discourage from having people be greeted properly and encouraged. I, I don't want to, I just, it triggered my memory as to what you had mentioned in our meeting, Joe, about what board members' participation in the, in these events would be.
I just think as a leader, I always think I'm not going to volunteer somebody else to do something I wouldn't do. So I would be first one to sign up. But I, I think that maybe students or somebody to help kind of put a face to it and help people feel welcome in the building or wherever the location is. And I absolutely understand why a board member would not participate in the discussion.
Your point is so important. I, I had a really bad experience in the last large school district. I won't name the district, no need to embarrass anyone. But they, we set up these meetings and they were in places where it wasn't obvious where the room was. And not only was nobody there to greet the parents and the community, but then the rooms, there were no signs inside, like, you know, at least have a sign if you're not going to have that. And, you know, I felt so bad because it made the district look bad. It made the district look like they weren't ready for the community. So I love your idea, if you have the people who could do it, personal greeters, what do you think?
Yeah. Students would, you know.
Students.
Students would be the perfect, yeah.
Thank you, very good idea.
Any, any? I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, James.
Yeah, so Laura, I have a couple of questions, but I think they can all be satisfied. If there's an opportunity, if the board, either through just socializing the agenda or not, I know Brian asked if we could have a copy, but if we can provide feedback and if the board has ability to talk through the agenda and the details of the plan, I don't need to ask many questions. I think it's really down to, will we have an opportunity to provide input into this agenda? Or in this plan?
So are you referring to this timeline that we're going through right now?
Nope, I'm referring to January 10th.
The schedule, okay.
Yeah, the scheduled events and where they're held and what the detailed plans are around the 10th. If that's a socialized document and we have the ability to provide input, I don't have to say anything right now because there's too many unknowns, right?
Okay, well, this schedule is brand spanking new, it just came out like literally an hour ago. So yes, we will be sharing that and then you can send your feedback. Okay.
So we don't have to have all of our questions answered tonight. We have a follow-up feedback channel.
True.
Okay, that's all I need.
Andrew, did you have a question?
Yeah, I guess I would assume then it goes without saying that if we're, if it makes sense for board members to not attend the, you know, community parent sessions, which make, makes sense. And I agree, but that would go for, that would go for administrators going to a different group as well. They shouldn't go as a parent, they shouldn't go as a community either, correct?
That, that makes absolute good sense for the same exact reason. So I, I don't like when the, for instance, if the principal and assistant principal come when we're talking to the teachers. I just want to make sure everybody feels like they can be totally honest and open.
Brian?
Is there a way that you can gauge how many people, especially with the parents of the community member ones? How many of you had on average with the other forums and just space-wise as far as room availability and stuff?
Unfortunately, the turnout is always much less than you would like and you would think. And since COVID, what we've learned, something positive came out of COVID. And that's that people really like the virtual option. It's much more convenient for them. And we're getting parent and community input via the virtual in far greater numbers than we ever got for people coming out. But what we have learned is, somebody said it earlier, there are people that really want to come out and meet you and talk to you. And so I would never want to ever turn this into total virtual. But the onsite, unfortunately, not, if 20 people came, we would view that as a real positive.
Yeah, if I may, I think having the survey out there, a lot of parents and committee members will feel as if they've given their input, teachers as well, and so they may opt not to go to a, a session.
Okay. Anybody? Okay, we can move on.
I'm on the top of the second page now. And we've alluded to this, but each board member, we would like to offer you a 30 to 40 minute opportunity to talk to us privately. We'll be asking you the same three questions we ask everybody else. And you could have your choice of either a Zoom or a phone call, whichever you're most comfortable with. And we're using the same rationale. Normally, we do the board interviews during that same week that we do the onsite. But we wanted to get your input first and we wanted to get your input in December to, again, get this process moving. So Kinsey, I believe you were going to create a schedule where there's a bunch of times and board members can sign up for whatever time best meets their, their calendar. Is that correct? Okay, does that sound okay with everybody? It'll be, do you have a date that you'd like that week? All we did was lay out a week, but.
No, put me on the spot. No date yet.
The survey then closes on January 13th. And we go through quite a cool process. I get Sheila's input from all the, the people that she's talked to online. And I get all, we get all the Todd's notes, my notes, we put them all together. And we get the survey results and we look for themes. We look for where things are converging. And it's so cool, it's a fun part of our process for us because things just kind of lay out. And every district is unique. So we will then put together the leadership profile report. It will be very detailed, it'll be, here's what we learned from the focus groups. Here's what we learned from the surveys. Here's what we learned from our board conversations. Here's what it looks like when you put it all together. And then the final page of that document is the leadership profile, which usually comes out in the form of bullet points, maybe eight to 10 bullet points. And then we, we just have the profile of who we're looking for. And we thought we would make it easy for all of you and just piggyback on a date you already have. And that's January 23rd. It won't be as long of a meeting as this one. Usually we're able to do it in about a half hour with presenting and questions that you might have. So whatever way you want to add us to your meeting on the 23rd, that's when you'd get the profile.
Thank you, that sounds great. Anybody have any input on that?
I have questions, Laura.
Go ahead, James.
And my questions are ones of time. First, I want to make sure I understand the leadership profile. This is an internal confidential report that you're going to provide us? And you're going to use it as you're trying to build the slate of candidates and that's?
No, no, it's not confidential, nor is it closed session. This is absolutely open session. This is what we learned from the community. And so not only will we report to you, but we'll give you the report, we'll ask you to post it on your website. And we're then going to alter our recruiting documents that we're using right now. And we'll attach the profile to the recruiting documents.
That was the nature of the question, right? If it's not confidential and you're actually, because when I publish positions, if I'm looking for a certain set of competencies, that's part of the, the, the job posting, right? So you're saying, right now, we're going out a month, maybe six weeks of kind of a vanilla posting, right? That's very generic, if you're interested in a superintendent's role, here's a little bit about Green Bay. And really, the, the more refined posting will be available on or about the 23rd. So my, my point is, we earlier targeted January 1st as an initiation of a national search. I would, so maybe February 1st would be a better time when you have a complete profile with the appropriate job posting that has the competencies that we're looking for. Or extend it two months, so you have an opportunity to have a generic posting and then modify it with, without just six days left of the month, right?
Well, if you want to push the whole process back, you're talking about extending the window for applications an entire month.
That's not what I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting that we look at the timeline and be critical and review the timeline to make sure that the dates and everything make sense. We took the decision to extend the survey results out into the middle of January. And I just want to make sure that if we do that, there are ramifications for doing that. And one of them is, we miss being able to utilize that profile in our advertising.
Okay.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, I had the similar thought with that because January 23rd, if we're going to use that and only keep it open for a week after that, it seems like we're not really getting bang for the buck on that. No, I, I agree, James, if we cut two weeks off of that survey, are we confident that we'd still be able to get responses? I guess I'm kind of looking at you, Lori, just for your input on that as far as other surveys that we've done, the, the amount that we've kept the window open and the response, two weeks? Okay, so keeping two weeks for our other surveys that we've used, would we feel comfortable narrowing that window so we can get more relevant information and keep it on there?
Well, I, I would be open to that. I wonder then about the, then also the, the board interviews aren't going to be until the week of the 12th to the 16th, like. Oh, sorry, sorry, that won't be an issue then, I take it back. oh, sorry, sorry, that won't be an issue then. I take it back. Um I was thinking January, sorry. Um but the focus groups as well, like I um if we want to maximize the effect of the national group um search. I I see what you mean about that. That, go ahead, Brian.
How quickly would you be able to turn around the national, I I'm sorry, our community outreach on January tenth and eleventh? And if we were to shorten up that time for the survey from December ninth until was January first, I'm just using that as a date, would we be able to bump up the information as far as um having more time for it to work with the leadership profile?
I think that's a really good suggestion. We don't need much time for the turnaround. Um couple of days, I I think I did it in three days the last time. And um as long as you wouldn't mind having um well, I usually, we usually like to present the profile to the board before we begin using it. So you might have to have a special meeting um earlier where we could present this to you. But it would be a great idea because it would get two extra weeks of being able to advertise with the specific uh profile in hand.
Well, we do have a a work session on the ninth. January ninth, instead of doing this.
But the focus groups aren't till the tenth.
You'll have to move.
Fine with me.
Earlier in the the first week of January and it's, you know, as a return from holiday, I don't know.
A good time.
I I think a- as a board, we would I might speak for the whole board, but I think looking at the heads nodding, we would be fine with having a special board meeting because this is something that would be presented in, you just said it, this would be presented in open session or closed session test.
Totally open session, probably a half hour, forty minutes tops. And we'll come whenever you want us to.
Okay, I would be open to a special board meeting. Uh I was about to speak, I'm sorry.
Uh I just had one question. Is it necessary to initiate a job posting on the first of the month? So or are we just buying thirty days? If we're buying thirty days, yeah, targeting, you know, that mid-January and letting it run to oh, and not having an initial posting that's generic and just post mid-January to middle of February, does that back up the timeline too much?
Um, I think we could extend the deadline for applications and still get that April um deadline. So I think we can at least expand that at at least two weeks. So we would be able to have an, I think, four weeks with it posted with the specific profile, which would be really nice. Glad you brought this up. I think this is a very good idea.
Go ahead, Laura.
I have sort of, um maybe some of our HR experts can help with this. I'm thinking about if you are post, if we have the vanilla posting, which I love that term, James. Um, the vanilla posting and I am going to apply for a job and I see that posting, but then later there's a different posting with a leadership profile. It would seem that there's a certain advantage to the people applying with a leadership profile because they're going to cater their application to what they know we're looking for. At least I do that when I apply for jobs, I look at their job description and and so that's, so I'm just wondering if um one, that's one thought, two, do we have to use, can we leave the vanilla um posting out there and use the leadership profile in screening or in um evaluating somehow, share it with them during the interview process. Here are the things we're looking for, you know, to get a more um to have everybody on the same equal playing field and then to also adhere to the timeline we already established.
Well, as you, as I reported earlier, four people have applied already. So I don't want to downplay, I don't like the word the vanilla because we actually tailored it to Green Bay and we tried to make it very individualized using information from your website. So at this point, it's not really a vanilla. It's pretty darn good and it's already attracting attention. And uh it would make no sense to wait until we're done with this whole process, you know, to to start bringing people in. Um regarding though, once the profile is ready, Todd and Sheila and I that's like our Bible. We bring it up when we screen people, we bring it up, we hand it to them when we're recruiting. And so everybody, no matter when they applied, will have access to that. We we tell candidates before we screen, uh bring them in for their first interview with us. Make sure you to check out the Green Bay website, look at the survey results and look at the leadership profile.
Go ahead, Laura.
A follow up to that. I think I misunderstood then because I I thought I heard that we were, apologize for the vanilla usage. The um um the one with all the sprinkles, the next one with the leadership profile, um how are we? I understood before that that was going to be posted then as for people that would apply then to be able to see that leadership profile. But that the people that already applied then wouldn't have that advantage, you know what I'm saying? To, if we're going to include it in the posting for people to apply, the people that see that leadership profile more specifically of what we're looking for would have an unfair advantage to the people that already applied.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I I agree with you and I changed my language to generic from vanilla. And and I did look at your post and you do a good job of describing the district and the attributes of the district, but the the advantage comes when you're compiling your list of accomplishments and what you highlight about your career. If you don't know that we're really interested in a good communicator, you may not highlight those achievements, right? So I agree with Laura, there is an advantage to those that come later. As long as you as the consultant do not disqualify or you go back to those initial applicants, describe it and allow them to, you know, uh uh kind of make their uh application sensitive to it. Um you know, I think that covers it.
Okay, Brian?
Are we, are we able to have you, I'm sorry, what I mean is, are you able to um forward on uh this leadership profile to the four applicants and anyone else that has applied at that point beforehand with it?
Yes, we can certainly do that. And and um the 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 profile, once it's out there, we've had candidates who've gone in and and adjusted their applications and because there's maybe additional detail out there. I mean, Green Bay is a large district, you 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 know, you're, there is a certain um certain elements and characteristics and skill sets you want in a superintendent. And I think those who are applying right now know what that is and they probably have done their research as well. And there's a lot of data on your website, you know, all the way back to through the referendum. There's all kinds of uh uh information out there that I'm sure candidates are drawing upon. But candidates will go back and modify their application and we certainly um will make uh those who've applied aware that that leadership profile is out there. I will say, I will say that that leadership profile, it's key for the candidates, but it's Joe had uh mentioned this earlier, it's key, it's a key tool for all of us to use um moving through the process. So when we start developing interview questions and those types of things, we're gonna root those questions in that leadership profile. So it's, it is important for applicants to know that, but I can tell you, I've applied for jobs and and leadership profiles haven't been out there and been successful with that. But that leadership profile is key uh throughout the entire process. And I think that's an important piece to 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 keep in mind.
I I'd like for you, not just to say that it's out there for them, but I would like for you to provide that to them uh with the people that have applied before once. Yep. I'd like for you to provide it with to them, to the individual candidates that have sent it out, you know, that have applied earlier and encourage them if they need to update anything to further, you know, focus in on what we're looking for for those candidates that have submitted beforehand and any other candidates as they apply to make sure that they have that in hand.
Absolutely. We can definitely do that.
Yeah, our um our application service, uh the whole uh procedure has the ability to communicate with candidates as simple as an email with an attachment. So we can get a note out to those four people that the leadership profile will be available, we'll send it to you, it'll be on the website.
And their application is always open. They can always go back and change and things to it then through the entire process until we actually do the screening application where we actually print it. So they have access to it.
Good.
Okay, I'll just one one additional comment. I I think it's um uh worth noting that uh when we do post positions and there's a deadline, um you tend to see a little bit of an uptick in applications towards the end because candidates are taking their time and absorbing all the information and doing everything they can. And those who may be applied early are going back in and making some adjustments.
I'm gonna, um I'm just to piggyback off something you said before, Todd. I'm going to assume that people who are interested in this position are watching our meetings, probably watching right now. They're doing their own research. And um and are preparing themselves already.
There's no question.
And I I know that the this profile is really important uh and and we'll, you know, we'll get to work on it soon. But um there's other ways to go to go about this process and I'm assuming the people are serious, are are doing it as we speak.
Well, and and most of those, they'll make contacts into the district. They'll talk to administrators, they'll talk to teachers, they're doing their research.
Find a way.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anybody, go ahead, Brian. Sorry, sorry, you gotta.
With this leadership profile and I'm just looking at the postings part as I'm looking at your website. There, it appears that newer positions are listed on the top. I'm assuming that the other search groups that we're looking at partnering with do the same thing. So by taking this leadership profile and updating our advertisements and our postings, nothing against the other school districts, but does that then bump us back up to the top as far as displays and use of our advertisements?
So that's a, that's a great question. And I can tell you for some of the state sites, you can actually pay an additional uh uh an amount to have it pinned to the top. And we've done, I've been a part of districts that have done that. So I know you settled on a dollar amount, but there could be some additional cost if you wanted to do something like that.
I would love I wouldn't mind exploring that.
Yeah, it's it's a great option.
Honestly.
It is, it is.
Um, let's, let's, I don't know if we should need to do that right now, but um.
It's it's through the state association, so we, those who made the contact with Wasby and Wasda. Wasby and Wasda, they can make the contact. It's, I don't think it's a a a substantial cost, but it's 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 a nice thing to do because otherwise you're you're moving down that list.
Right, okay. Let's, let's stick a pin in that.
I will.
Okay. All right, let's uh maybe we need to move on. We've got uh okay, we've got a lot to cover still, I think.
Well, with the good suggestions that have come forward regarding um maximizing the amount of time with the actual profile, um where I have applications closed January thirtieth, I think we could easily push that to mid-February. And then our first round at where we start our screening could then be subsequently moved back without interfering with the rest of the schedule. So I think that that's where we can catch up. And so I'll, I've taken good notes and I will make sure that we get this new the new calendar back out to you that that reflects all the good ideas that have come forth.
I think we we had a um, I'm searching my memory now, we had a we had decided that the December, the late December school board meeting where this would be, where where a candidate would be actually voted on was, it was important to keep that that second meeting in in uh April. But I can't remember, do you remember Sandy?
You want to have?
Oops, sorry. Was it the vote on April tenth? Okay. Um, we kind of, we decided that that was a a goal. I thought it was, I'm sorry, I saw it was the second one, so that's okay. Um.
I believe we can implement the suggestions that arose tonight and not change the end date.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Best of both worlds, right?
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
So that brings us down to our screening and Sheila and Todd and I will select X number of applicants from the pool that appear to be the closest match to the profile. That um there's no magic number, but it tends to be anything from ten to twelve candidates um that we want to take an initial look at. We don't like to put exact numbers because if we have fifteen ones that look like they match up really well, we'll do fifteen. If we only have ten, we'll do ten. We then um write questions connected to the profile and we assess the candidates using the profile. The the tool becomes just in an of enormous importance. We even create rubrics that allow us to have the profile down one side and the grading scale on the other. So um again, that's why we spent a lot of time talking to you tonight about the profile. So we'll do our work and then um it's time for the board then to get involved. And this is the point in the process where you guys really kind of take over. And we turn a little bit more into the background, although we're with you every step of the way. So when we have done our screening and select, we then select a slate of candidates that we present to you. We would need a special meeting of the board for this. This one would be closed session because we would be keeping the confidentiality of these folks at this point in the process. And we've scheduled that for somewhere between the week of February twentieth to twenty fourth. As hard as we try, that's such an important meeting that it usually takes an hour and a half minimum, two hours is usually the average. We do two things at the meeting. The three of us will take you through um an idea of who of you know, we got thirty total applicants, fifteen were from out of state, you know, and we'll give you all of those kinds of statistics. So you get to see what the search looked like. We will then take you through the key um uh highlights of each person that we're bringing forward to you that we recommend that you interview and give you a chance to ask questions. We'll have the paperwork and then we will set up a drop, electronic Dropbox for all of you where all of their paperwork, every last letter of reference certificate will be available for you to do your research without having to kill a million trees and, you know, bring you a a folder this thick. So you'll have everything you need. The last thing we'll do at that meeting is we'll take you through protocols of interviewing. And we will get you started on how you're going to develop your questions. The first round is usually held onsite somewhere that of your choosing. Most boards do their district office. Um, the interviews should be between an hour and an hour and fifteen minutes. We have found any shorter than that doesn't give you a good enough idea. Any longer than that and it doesn't serve its purpose. Um you're going to interview these six people however you want. And it's one of the reasons, I hope you brought your calendars, because we'd like to nail a date down here. Some boards, um the normal amount of people we bring on a slate is usually six is is our average. But we might bring you only five because there's too big of a gap between the fifth person and the sixth person. And we don't want to waste your time or theirs. We've had the opposite occur where there isn't a gap until after the seventh person. So we figured you, why arbitrarily chop someone off? So we will give you between five and seven candidates to interview. Your decision tonight has to be how you want to do that. A board we just worked with in McQuanigo, they didn't want to talk to any more than two candidates a night. So they devoted three straight nights that week and they did two, two and two. And they eked out an extra hour after the last day to do their decision making. We've had a recent board uh only wanted to devote two nights, so maybe they started at five thirty and went till nine, they got three candidates in. Um and they only needed to do two days. I've had another board that wanted to do like a Friday night and then finish them up Saturday where um you know, they could do more candidates that way. And I've even had one board, I know this one's not popular, but it worked. Um, you know, they could do more candidates that way and I've even had one board, I know this one's not popular, but it worked for them. They wanted to do it on a Saturday and do all of them on one day. So, um, the most common and the one we recommend The most would probably be two days, three candidates, it's not too overwhelming for you. It's not unfair to the last candidate because you'll still be fresh. Um, and then you do that, get it done in two days and have your, your meeting.
Okay, so we should schedule three days.
What I'm gonna let you do with your colleagues right now Laura would be, Uh, how do you want to structure it and what days can we pin down? By the way, I don't, we don't mean to be nags about getting the date pinned down tonight, but it really helps us When we're doing our recruiting and when we're having our interviews, we like to be able to, to say, round one is on February whatever, so that, you know, people can get it in their calendars, have it in their, their heads.
Go ahead, Todd.
And if I may add, it's, it's probably best if you can do it within a week. Versus having like, uh, on a Tuesday and then you come back the following Tuesday to conduct that, that length of time is probably not Going to suit all of you best.
So the goal is to interview all the candidates that are proposed and then to have a, to narrow it down to two.
In a perfect, in a perfect world, you would love to narrow it down to two and have two finalists. It's usually, um, very manageable that way and makes the final decision a little bit easier. We have had boards that have had a real tough time making the decision on finalists. Which we take as a point of pride, you know, that we found such good candidates, they couldn't decide, but Um, we've had as many as three and four people for finalists, but two Is more likely, so the best way to put this Laura would be your job after round one is to determine the finalists.
Okay.
Um, I have, I have a couple of questions, so I just want to make sure I'm, I might have missed something or how, so. Let's just hypothetically say there's thirty applicants and you were talking about twelve to, twelve to fifteen, so that would be In your normal process, you would have narrowed it down to maybe, maybe ten, maybe twelve, maybe fifteen and presented them To the board and then boards typically narrow down to around six or?
No, sorry to interrupt, but that's not accurate and let's clear that up. Cause that's what you hire us for. We're going to review every application. We're going to bring in however many people we think match the profile, but we're going to come in And talk to you and recommend that you interview these five to seven candidates. That's what you hired us to do and that's one of the most important things we can do for you.
Okay, so what, what is there about, I guess I don't understand then the whole pool of applicants. And then you would be giving us a list of People who met the profile but didn't make your, your cut so we can see the difference or why? Why, why were we talking about, uh, you know, all applicants and then a subset and then a subset of that?
I, I'm sorry if I misspoke, I'm not sure, but let me go through it one more time. We want you to have The best slate of candidates to start this process. So it's our job to recruit people, assess them, narrow it down. Talk to maybe twelve people and then we make the decision That we want to give you this five to seven candidates and those are the only ones that we'll present to you.
Okay, you would, you would, they're a, a good more than half you won't even talk to because they clearly are not in the top.
Sure.
You will paper cut to twelve. And then interview the twelve. And then your, your plan is to generally present five, six, seven. That's where the cuts to around twelve, okay.
That's correct, you got it.
I guess this would be probably my only opportunity to bring this in and this came up a little bit when we were discussing and I, I may not have Majority support for this, but to be honest, part of the reason I voted for The other group is that the other group lets board members see All the applicants, uh, do, do I think it's likely that In looking at all thirty that I would want someone to get in that Didn't make your cut, no, I think it's unlikely. But I guess I would, I don't, I don't like the idea of not knowing if the one that got away was in the pack and maybe a fellow board member Saw something that, you know, you didn't and so I I remember our conversation was that that was Something that could be, something that could be discussed with the firm, so I guess I'm, I'm discussing it now.
Our recommendation would be to not do that. We are the firm that you hired to do this job for you. If you want to look at all of the applicants, what do you need us for?
Well, what we.
We feel really strongly about this because, you know, we've been doing this a long time, we've done between us, we've done fifty searches. We know what to look for and when boards want to see The candidates we chose to not bring in. Um, i- it just opens up our whole process to micromanaging and I think it Interferes with the integrity of the process, so, um, If four board members want us to do that, we'll do that for you. But our recommendation is it serves no purpose To, uh, get you a more positive result.
I'll just step in here for a second, I just wanna, and you and, we've talked about this and we talked about it in our smaller group. In prior, um, processes, we weren't always sure at the end that we had seen Applicant, all the applicants that we maybe should have, that's all. And, and so, so there's, there's a certain amount of, um, I think that's where some of this comes from, so we've talked through that already. Um, and, um, I do, I do, and, and I feel confident from what you've said That, um, that that won't happen in this case, so I just wanted to step in and say that I think I support the process that you have recommended, um, with that assurance, that's all.
I'll let my colleagues jump in because we didn't plan
I know.
Uh, what we were going to say about this, so I respect their views too. Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to reiterate that, that it was, that was part of the discussion, the last time we did talk about Choosing between the top two, it was that, um, that we would have that option with this group and so I think not all of us were Privy to the conversations.
Okay.
But, um, that was part of.
It was, I do recall that, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah.
So, um, like I said, I'll just reiter- reiterate, I am comfortable and I have reassurances from you. Um, that that won't happen here and, um, and I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with what you've proposed. But I wanted to hear from anyone else who has, um, things they want to say at this point. Anybody else? Go ahead, James.
So, yeah, I, I hear Andrew, um, and I, I guess I want to know, um, If micro management is your concern, I think that can be addressed. Um, it's not our intention and I was vocal about not supplanting you As the people that are charged with and are qualified to bring us a slate of candidates. But we also work in a very transparent field and we need to satisfy Our constituents that there was a due diligence and so in my book, if I saw And a, a note, noting or a documentation process Of everyone that submitted, when they were cut, reasoning for their not progressing to the next round. I would be satisfied that I've done my trust but verify governance role Without micromanaging your process.
Well, you've already talked about some, the report that you're going to give us. Um, at, when you, when, uh, uh, and when you have, um, got your full slate of people that have applied. Um, it, well, anyway, go ahead.
I, I think that's a really good suggestion, I think I could live with that. We, right off the bat, there'll be maybe five or six people that are just totally unqualified. For instance, they've only been a teacher and, or a principal, they've never even been in central office. So I mean, it's, it's real easy and we're very transparent about who we pick and why. Um, I'd be more than happy to put a report like that into the report we bring you. Um, when we bring you the candidates.
Thank you.
That'd be really.
Would that satisfy everybody's, um, concerns and requirements for the process, go ahead, Brian.
I, I agree with our discussion that we had before that that would be available to us, I mean, Had a friend apply for the head coaching position at Wisconsin, knowing he's not going to get it, you know, we would assume that those people will be cut With it as well, but for us to be able to have that access, I don't think it's micromanaging in any means. And I think it's part of our responsibility, you know, the, the community just supported us with ninety-three million dollars, I think. Having the ability to see at that point if we have a concern. I- is an important thing, so I think it would be dishonest, uh, I think it would be less than transparent to give the impression that We are definitely saying, no, we don't want to see it, but to have that possibility out there as individual board member and from Hearing from at least three of my colleagues tonight, you know, that's on the table that we may ask that information, so.
The, um, compromise that was, um, just presented there?
Well, I mean, no, Andrew, I'll answer then I'll let you go, no. Um, if, I mean, if we have a, if we have a question about it, I'd like to see the, the names and the information, the chances of that. Unlikely, but just to be upfront that, that, that may be a possibility. Um, because that was something that was discussed at the last board meeting with that possibility and may have Impacted people's decisions on who they supported on this, so.
So Brian, that's what I suggested, right, so I suggested that they turn over Their accounting of all their decision making on every applicant. Name, when they were, um, when they applied, when they were cut, reason for, reason why they didn't progress. So are you suggesting that upon reviewing that, you might want to say, I want to see The application packet for applicant ten?
Uh, James, I agree with what you're saying on y- your approach to it. If it gets to that point, we, we probably have a concern, but I, I want to be upfront with that. With James, what you said, that's, that's exactly what I agree with, the, the way you presented it with having that access to it.
Okay.
Can I answer your question on there?
Referring to as the compromise.
Then I apologize, yes, with what James said, yes.
Okay.
So I guess to, I'll just pick on a, I'll pick on a hypothetical example that was used in jest during the last superintendent hiring, although it It led to interesting discussions that with a constituent. Suppose, in the, suppose in the unlikely event that, um, Barack Obama applied to be our superintendent. Now, what I told that constituent was, oh, are you really going to be Uh, concerned about nothing but the licensure if Barack Obama applies and says, PS, I'm willing to do the job for one dollar. My answer to the constituent was, I'll tell you what, if Barack Obama applies to be our superintendent And will do it for one dollar, I would be open to at least hearing an interview and deciding if it was worth petitioning the state. To have a license waiver or something, right, now that's a, that's a goofy Example, but I guess I'm, I'm especially sensitive to this as I tend, I think I tend Historically to be much more open to non-traditional, outside the box options. I also know that there might be natural reasons for a, a firm to be A- and if I were, if I were in your position, I would be too, um, cautious About a very outside the box kind of figure. Right, it's, um, You know, I, I guess that's kind of where I'm, where I'm coming from, is someone There will be more people that meet the basic qualifications than, than we will get to interview and so is, you know, how likely is it? I think frankly Candidate, there's a higher, the reason I'm concerned is there's probably a bigger chance of candidates that I would like to see being screened out than perhaps others. So that's, that's where I'm. I guess that's right.
I, I know you guys, you know, we're just forming our relationship, you don't know us yet and Sounds like you had a bad experience before this, so.
We didn't even have a bit, I, we didn't have a bad search process experience, I don't think we had a bad search process experience.
Okay, well, we're, uh, We're still developing a relationship, but what I wanted to say is You, you made an assumption that we might be averse to non-traditional candidates, our firm has placed Several non-traditional candidates that we're really proud of. We know what to look for, it doesn't matter whether they came a traditional route Or they came an untraditional route, that's why we like to start with the leadership profile. And we, we enjoy looking at candidates that have a different path to the superintendency. There was a time when you had to be a prince, a, a teacher, a principal, a central office, a superintendent. You had to have that career ladder and lots of folks are not, um, Forming, uh, their career in that perfect pattern. So, you know, I guess this, if I were you, I wouldn't trust, I wouldn't like this either, but I guess we're saying, you know, Please trust us that we, we're going to be bringing you the best candidates and that we have experience. We have that same philosophy you do.
Okay, so Barack Obama offering to do the job for a dollar, but he is not even close to a superintendent licensure. Does he, could, could he, okay.
I think he'd make our screening process.
Could he make it through the screening process with an asterisk that says, look, This is a really unique opportunity, but you would have to look to the state for a waiver, or does he not make your cut? And that's a, again, it's a silly example, he's, uh, Hasn't expressed any interest to me in applying to the position, so I, right, so probably won't, but.
Well, we're not going to bring you anybody who we don't think can start the job when you want them to start the job. So sometimes people from out of state don't have all of their Wisconsin ducks in a row. So we will work with them and we will find out from the states that are involved. Exactly what is it going to take to be ready to rock? And if a great candidate is useless to you, if They can't qualify and be ready on July first for Green Bay, so that's another thing that we do for you.
Okay.
Well, I would, I would consider waiting, I, I would be open to consider waiting if they're the perfect candidate, I would be Open to consider fighting the state to let them start anyways, I would be open to using connections with the state To get an exception and so now, now I'm getting more worried that this perfect candidate who we think, if you think they can't get the, which It is valid for you to say, gee, uh, we like you, but you're not going to get your Wisconsin ducks in a row by August first. Now, they're not meeting your cut for a valid reason, but I might have advocated to fight for that candidate or to fight for a delay. But would never have that chance because I would not even know who it was.
Okay, hold on to that, go ahead, Todd.
I, I would say if that's the route that you want to go, we would certainly need to significantly adjust the timeline. Because I think you're, you, what you're talking about is looking and getting into the, the weeds on some of these candidates. The profile that we're going to present to you is going to give you all the information that you need to select the right candidate. The survey questions and you have, um, those, I know we're going to get into that, Joe, if you look at this survey. We asked things like a doctorate degree, how important is that? So your constituents are going to speak to you and say, this is what is important to us. And if it's something that is non-traditional or you want somebody who's more innovative, less innovative. Those are the types of things that come through in the survey and end up in a leadership profile. And Joe had alluded to the fact that when we bring the candidates forward, those, that, that slate of candidates to the board. Any of those candidates are going to be qualified to run the district.
Right.
I mean, we're not bringing candidates just to get over a particular threshold. We're bringing candidates that we believe are gonna be the best fit for the superintendency here in School District Green Bay. And it's up to you to narrow that down to the to the most qualified that you figure, that you believe meets that profile. And I think that's, that's important. We don't have a candidate.
Just a second, Andrew.
We don't have a candidate that we have in mind already that we're gonna, we're gonna march forward. That's not, we're out there working for you to find the very best candidates.
And I just want to step in here a second. We have a half an hour till our, until six o'clock. It is really important, I think, that we all understand that the timeline that's in place right now is actually pretty important for a lot of different things with regard to how our district runs. So deviating from that timeline, it would have to be, there'd have to be a pretty powerful um reason to do that. Um, cause we have people who are planning and, and, and are planning projects and things within my, with that timeline in mind. So deviating from that is probably not something we want to do. I'm just, that's my individual opinion. So. Um, are, are, are we able to move on now?
Why don't we move forward, accepting the compromise idea, which we will provide for you.
Okay.
And I think that really should, should do it for you. I think it'll have all the information that would be on your mind.
Okay. All right, we, we need to move on. So go ahead.
Um, after the first round, oh, did we pick the dates?
No.
That's where we left.
Yeah, we need to, everyone needs to pull out their um calendars and talk about um what the week. Uh, well, go into um February.
Have we decided on two nights or three?
I think two nights at least with a potential for three, like a question mark three.
Some, some boards will interview everyone in two nights.
Yeah.
But schedule a third in case sometimes you want to sleep on it and not make a decision after the second night.
Let's schedule three days. If we don't need the third, we don't need the third. It depends a lot on how many candidates we have. Did you have some thoughts, Sandy, on that? No, okay. You look like you wanted to talk. Okay, go ahead, Brian.
Could, could we go with the assumption that we would do more, no more than three interviews per night?
Yes.
Thanks, Ian.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. Is everyone else in agreement with that? James?
One percent.
Okay. All right, then no more than three per night. We're gonna schedule three with the possibility that we won't need the third. Okay, so.
Those dates now?
Let's, let's get them on a calendar since that will help you with your process. Um, the twenty eighth and the first, Tuesday and Wednesday.
The week of the twentieth to the twenty fourth.
February, yeah.
Um, that's, that's not what you have on your calendar. You have a, a March twenty seventh.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I was looking at the wrong uh column. February twenty seventh to March third.
So adjusting, we talked about keeping the application open to the middle of February. Does that change this at all?
I think this is where you could, you guys can make it up and be ready for these interviews, right?
We're, we're still good for that. Just making sure that I didn't adjust that date at all. Okay. All right, does anyone have any issues with that week that are just not movable or changeable?
I have a potential out of town on March first. I'm available the beginning of the week, but I think that's a Thursday, right?
That's a Wednesday. Laura?
I'll, I'll take it on and I'll, I'll go ahead and schedule.
Just so you know, there is a board meeting on the twenty seventh, that Monday, right?
Okay.
So. So the twenties, the first and the second, can we, can we at least put that on the calendar? Yeah, I think we should probably start at five, no later than five. If we're gonna see three people, that's gonna go pretty late for a candidate. Um. Well, okay, let's, let's talk about that then, because I, I, who, who, who does anyone feel like they could not do it at four o'clock?
The candidates.
Yeah, start the interviews at, at four.
The candidates. If they're gainfully employed, they may be at work.
Well, if they're gonna interview, they'll find a way. Um.
I don't, I don't like four. I, I never, I never really like four. I'm open to it for special occasions. I know I don't want to pre-plan having to change my work schedule three days in a row because of. Yeah, no, I'm not okay with it. I'll do it if you schedule it anyways, I'll do it, but I don't like it. I mean, it's, I think our, you know, this isn't a case where it's public visibility, because it's private interviews. It would, it's a, I really don't like doing things at four except in special circumstances. This might be one of them. Um. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should start at four. I think we should start at five, but let's do what you gotta do.
Um, how, how much time per, for each interview?
It's about an hour to an hour and a half, hour and fifteen minutes, I apologize. But you also have to get time for transition. You have to be able on out.
You don't want any overlap. All right, um, is, go ahead. How about, um, James, are you okay with this week? He said he might be gone on the Thursday.
I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Good, Brian.
Looking at everyone else's schedules, would the, would four thirty work, Andrew, or is five kind of what works well with work schedule and stuff?
I mean, I, I also, I also don't want it to be completely dependent on hmm personally my work schedule either. So if at four thirty, I, I was also envisioning our interviews. If you're saying with your process, interviews are often longer at four thirty, it's fine with me.
For the sake of time, you don't have to decide the, the schedule. You just need to get the dates down.
Okay. Can we just save, let's just save.
Save those dates and then you can work on the time.
Let's just say now, though, for fo- four thirty.
Okay.
Just tentatively. How's that?
And then, sorry, Laura, but to back up one, did we, um, could we pick a date for that special board meeting where we present the slate? Sometime that week of the twentieth to the twenty fourth?
Of February?
Yeah.
Um.
I think everyone should get that on their calendars as well in advance.
I agree. Um.
That should be a regular scheduled meeting, right? Or is it twenty seventh scheduled meeting?
Yeah, it's the twenty seventh. So I have, um, I don't have any strong feelings about, so any of those days, does anyone have any problems that week? With the special about, you said about an hour?
Two hours.
Two hours, okay. Two-hour meeting, special meeting.
Well, I've allocated Mondays to school board. So if we can do the third Monday on the twentieth?
Does it, does the twentieth look good, people? All right, let's do the twentieth.
Fabulous.
Okay.
Keep those calendars out. Let's, let's do our last calendar work and then uh we can kind of wrap things up. After you have talked to the six, you'll try to narrow it to finalists, assuming most likely that it'll be two. The second round, when you invite the two finalists back, normally that interview is, we like to recommend a more casual uh setting. And dinner usually works really well for that. Um, many restaurants have a room, you know, that, that you can, can get. And so you would invite on separate days each candidate to come for the second interview. And the second interview is, is a little bit more casual, but also fair game. Is any issues that you maybe had of some of their answers from round one, you can come back and and talk to them some more, or sometimes you were intrigued by an answer, but you didn't get enough ch- time to delve deeper, so you might want to revisit some. So it's not quite as structured, but it's still very, very important. So um we would like that to be then um the sixth, the week of March sixth through the tenth, the very following week. Notice once we start these, we like to keep it rolling. So you're not, there's not a lot of time between um, you know, your thoughts about a candidate.
My recollection of our last process is that there were a lot of special meetings and there's, it's a lot, it's a very
It's.
Time-consuming process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, however, it's the most important, biggest decision that you seven are gonna be making, so.
Yeah. Okay, so the week of, of March sixth, um, we're gonna need one night?
Two.
Two nights.
One dinner for each person.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I, is the um, the March twenty seventh through um March third, are those onsite? So candidates? So the six will travel potentially?
They will travel to you. It'll be in person. That's an expectation.
Two weeks later.
Yes.
The travel again.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So two nights on the, on the week of March sixth, um, again, I'm, I, do we want to try to stick to Mondays again? Does that work for people? So the, how about the sixth and the seventh? Okay.
When's the board meeting in March?
Sixth and seventh of March.
Sure. Why not? Monday and Tuesday.
March sixth and seventh, okay. You guys are great. I really appreciate the fact that we could get these down. I can't tell you how important that is.
It's important to get this, get these dates on the calendar. So um.
Now, the, the final piece is um, I know it's been your history um in the past to have um a day in the district for the candidates. And um that has to be done in conjunction with the finalists. It's only for the two finalists. And um, those, when we've seen them done, those can be done all in one day. The candidate could do the day in the district capped by the dinner with the board. Is that, Laura, how you did it in the past? So we don't have to pick any new days um for that, correct? Tho- those will just be in conjunction with the two dates of the dinners.
Um.
Sandy, is that how it was done before?
Okay, all right.
It's a grueling day, but the candidates Todd went through and he survived.
I'm retired.
Okay, then let's do it that way. All right.
It doesn't have to be a full day. It could just be, they can come in at noon and then spend the afternoon storing the buildings and then dinner.
Okay, all right.
And then if, if all goes well, you choose the person that you want and then um, you know, you would uh work with your legal counsel and create an offer and and hopefully on April, you announce the new person to your community.
So we would be um, that, so the second, pretty much the second half of March could be the back and forth of negotiation, et cetera.
The negotiations and um, we've seen everything happen there, but they usually go pretty smoothly.
Right. Will you be any part of that?
We can be if you'd like. Um, because you have your own in-house legal counsel, you probably don't need us, but some of the smaller districts we work with, um, we can help be a conduit. We also have a nice form that we give the candidates about all of their current benefits and and things that are in their current contract that we can have them fill out and give you, and that helps in the process. So our job there is uh however you want to use us.
Okay.
By that point, we have a good relationship with both the board and the candidates and if we can be helpful, fabulous.
Go ahead, Todd.
And, and was done, was be can assist as well. You pay for that membership.
We have excellent in-house counsel. I have no concerns. I was just wondering if at that point you guys still are part of this process or not, but I I have no concerns. Yeah, I have no concerns there. So um, okay, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if we should put March eighth in as well. Um, you know, hopefully we'll be, have it narrowed down to two, but I don't want to limit ourselves and then try to cram or force ourselves to limit it to two. If there may be three, that may be a good candidate.
It's not a bad idea to, for people to keep, to, to understand that this is, that, yeah, that there might be some um, additional time needed and to plan accordingly. So if people want to block off um the eighth as well, the evening of the eighth, so that we have um maybe a little bit of a cushion if we need it. Again, the weather, who knows, right? So.
Laura, will you also need time to debrief and to make your decision? So I can get that on everybody's calendar.
Yeah, that's a good point. I was gonna ask that question.
Some, some boards, um, it's so clear to them after the second dinner, they stick around and discuss and they make their decision. Other boards, again, sometimes it's a tougher decision. You want to sleep on it. So that extra date, the eighth, could be if you don't have an extra candidate and you feel like you want to uh let a night pass and then make the final decision, it could serve that purpose.
Well, folks should um definitely put that on their calendar. If we don't need it, then we won't, we won't need it. But um, that's, I think that's a good plan. Thank you, Laura.
So.
Just, I just want to clarify, Kenzie, will you be able to send all of these to us?
Absolutely, please, yes. And, 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 and as to what we hope to accomplish on each of those dates too, it's gonna be um important, I think, to have.
I'll put them all on the updated calendar based on all the decisions we made today.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, James.
Yeah, so Laura, just a process question. So on March sixth or tenth, we, we have dinners and, oh, interviews and you know, in district meetings. Um, then we go dark, right? So in the event that this is not a unanimous decision, and there's a dissenting opinion, is the only time that a board member wants to go on record as dissenting the April board meeting or, you know, we're going to capture in advance of that that a vote for the board as to which would be the preferred candidate that we start con- contract negotiations with.
I divert to your counsel and, on that.
Yeah, that's, that's my question. I don't know the process. So I just, I just see a gap between we interview and then stuff happens and then we have a successful candidate presented to the public and I just don't know.
Just from our experiences, we've had some boards after they meet for the final dinner and they have decided they will actually come and vote and then start negotiations. But most districts get a direction from a straw vote or however consensus is formed. And then they go out and start negotiating and there's only one vote and that's to name the new superintendent. You can do it either way. We've seen it both ways.
I'm addressing the chair because I'm looking for some historical background in which way we've done it.
We're gonna, we're gonna hear from our legal counsel now.
So you would need, you would need to post to go into closed session to deliberate on your final candidates. So if that's what you want to do, then we would have to make sure that that was posted. And then you could then post to come out of closed session and open session to announce the selected candidate. I believe that is what we did the last time. I'm, I can, Sandy would have a better memory of this than I would from the last. It, right, and then you'll vote in public. So you'll deliberate in closed session.
And vote. I mean, get a consensus.
Get a consensus and then come out of closed session and vote in open session.
Now, that would be just who the candidate is to pursue negotiations. Then there'd have to be a second vote where you're approving the contract.
Right. That's correct. We do two votes.
Okay, so what's not represented on this schedule is that interim potential special board meeting.
I, which one is he talking about? Are you talking about the closed session where we deliberate?
Yes.
That'd be March eighth.
I think that's the eighth.
Okay, so that's what we're, so not only is it a flex day for a potential third candidate, but we intend to deliberate there as well.
Yes, in closed session. Yeah.
Well, so would we be, would we be able to go in closed session, discuss, find out who our selected candidate is? Instruct you or you to make that be known to that candidate before it's a. Instruct you or you to make that be known to that candidate before it's announced that the selected candidate in an open session. My concern is kinda like notify the family beforehand before we come up and say this is our selected candidate. So we also have the professional courtesy to the person who wasn't selected. So they aren't all sudden, I don't wanna say blindsided, but it's on the news as opposed to here's a professional courtesy to it.
If I'm remembering correctly, I I think the timeline was the board met that night, and then we were posted for the next morning, which allowed the board, I believe the board president was the one who called the selected candidate as well as the other candidate. That night after you had your closed session, and then that following morning is when the vote occurred.
I do remember taking the vote in the morning. Yeah.
Did you guys do two uh, meetings? You said you took, you you did a vote for the candidate, and then you came back and did another one for the contract?
Correct, yeah. Because we're, we're not gonna be able to, the the board is who contracts with the superintendent in Wisconsin, and we're not going to have those terms negotiated prior to making that final selection, and the board's gotta authorize the contract negotiations with that individual. So that really needs to happen in two steps.
Yeah, that was my, that was my, my point. That was my question, but I understand how it's different. So, okay. Thank you.
Alright, anybody, anybody else? Go ahead, Todd.
So the, just so I'm clear, so the board can't give the president the authority, the parameters to negotiate that contract? I've seen that done.
Yes, they give the parameters, but the board in Green Bay has always voted on the final contract for the superintendent.
It sounds like what I was, what I was hearing is that the announce, this will be your candidate, and then you're gonna negotiate the contract. The announcement of the candidate is gonna be known publicly, and then you're going into negotiations. Okay, okay.
Yeah, I I voted, I voted no on a candidate in the past out of, and made it clear that I was doing so just out of a very strong preference for the other candidate. And then at that time, I felt at that time, it was appropriate for, in my individual opinion, as an independent elected official, at that time, I thought it was appropriate to vote yes for the contract, even though I had voted no on the person. That's what I believed at that time. So I did that, and I think it's, it's a, you could have any number of things. You could have someone just not be okay with uh, just not feel they could get, they might like the candidate and have to, but feel they just can't get with the salary that others have. I mean, any number of things could happen there.
So just consensus, we'd like to go with the, what we've done in the past where we'll give the professional courtesy of the evening and then reach out and do the second vote the next morning.
I thought that worked well. It it did give a little bit of time to to notify the candidates.
I'm just looking at the.
So we're gonna be voting on March eighth in the morning?
Ninth.
The ninth.
I'm curious if a noon meeting would work better for everybody and do that virtually, like we've done with some of our other special board meetings?
Yeah.
Would that work better?
Yes, please.
So just to be sure.
Wait, wait, wait. That that's the the biggest decision you'll ever make, and we're gonna do it as a scheduled virtual? The most important vote a board takes, are we doing a scheduled virtual?
No, we're gonna do it in person.
Okay.
So in person?
Well, of course, if someone has to be virtual, that's your right, of course. But I think we should. I think scheduled virtual is for when we have, in my opinion, scheduled virtual meeting are the five-minute ones to do the obligatory, you know, motions to make sure we can hire people before the school year starts, so.
So Brian, how does that work for you with school?
I would like to be able to, the, I I view them, the main meeting is the one that we're in closed session. We have the discussion on. If we're coming to the point of a vote where it's going to be unsure of where that vote's coming, we haven't done our job in the closed session meeting to see where it's at. So I I would be fine with seven AM. I would be fine. I can get you like my bell schedule, and I can talk to my boss to see when I can zoom in for the five-minute vote on the final, the final approval of the issuance of the con, you know, of our selection. That that work should have all been done the night before, I would assume, so.
Correct. I would hope.
Okay.
So it it may be at some weird eleven forty-seven time or something.
We can, we have plenty of time to work on this. Um, but I think you guys have some other things you'd like to talk about before.
We made it through, which is fabulous, and there's about eight minutes left before your meeting starts. But I know there were a couple of questions that came up regarding the survey. So we could spend the remaining time answering any of those.
I think um, there was, yeah, some questions about the survey. And what that would look like.
So I have some. Um, does anyone else have? Cause a a couple of questions may may not be the appropriate way I would describe it. Um, but I don't know, I don't want, if there are others that have questions there, I don't wanna occupy the time.
Go ahead, Laura.
I I have questions, but I shared my, my um, comments or not questions, comments, all of that. So I don't know, in in terms of time, I'm not sure. Um, so I can defer to James and then maybe follow up.
Okay, alright, go ahead, James.
Okay, so um, if I understood the reason why we're doing the survey is to develop a leadership profile, it um, stands to reason for me that we would include in the strengths and the weaknesses, things or attributes that can be influenced or should be influenced by the person, the successful candidate, right? Or be interesting to that, that the candidates. So when I look at um, strengths, I don't understand why size of district or location of district are included um, amongst the characteristics. Um, you know, that's all, you detailed that all in the job posting or whatever, but when I look at this and I'm asking someone from the community to fill this out, those kind of items feel misplaced um, because a person cannot change the size or the location of the district. Um, I I look, in in generally, my comments, uh, some of, some of the uh, questions ask a lot from the person filling out the survey in that there are a lot of choices, right? And so when I looked at this, I was like, how do we get down to the choices that matter or the attributes that would differentiate like the candidate? So um, I I looked at um, question five. Um, it seemed like the characteristics um, that we like to see in a superintendent, they kinda fell between some managerial competencies or characteristics and personal competencies or characteristics. And I was wondering if the board or if anyone would be interested in potentially making five into two questions, one about their managerial um, characteristics and one about um, their personal um, attributes that are interesting to the um, the community. Because articulate, um, genuine, um, uh, things like that feel like they're more personal versus um, professional. Um. And then when we looked at concerns, the the, the primary problem I have with number seven is um, curriculum is not a cons, I don't know if someone's going to understand what we mean by curriculum being a concern. Um, so um, when I I looked at this, I don't know um, why we would in include enrollment growth, because we all know that that's not a a primary concern. Um, I don't see things like achievement um, in the list of concerns um, that I know we're, we know is different than curriculum. Um, I don't know what technology has a, there's multiple aspects of technology. So uh, you know, I know we only have five minutes. Um, but I I just grew concerned that if I were someone in the community that doesn't have the experience in district, I'd look at this list and I'd go all of them, or you know, i- i- I don't know that I'd give a quality answer. Um, if um, you were to put that word in a sentence, a descriptive sentence, um, curriculum is going in the wrong direction, or is something like that where they would kind of understand um, an issue or be able to, we could articulate issue for them. I I don't know what the board thinks about that. Um, so there were just a couple of things that I would like missing, and I put doc, uh, comments in the document that was shared. I don't know if those gets to um, you, or if I need to save this and provide this as a copy, but I have made comments to them.
Okay, go ahead, Laura.
I don't know what the timeline is, but I, or if we have the opportunity to review this, but I I could not support this as it is written going out to our community. Um, I think, and some of the things that James had had pointed out, but I just think some of the language, um, just going with number three, we talk about strengths, but then some of them have values in terms of excellent teachers and staff. We're, if we're identifying our teachers and staff as a strength, um, that we don't need to have excellent, just some kind of survey um, um, protocol, I think was um, important. There's some double-barreled questions for rating in terms of um, in number five, a good decision maker and a problem solver. Those can be two different skills. Somebody can be good at making decisions, but they can't solve a problem. So how, I'm just looking at this as a parent, how would I evaluate that as two separate things? Um, additionally, um, the, where diversity, equity, inclusion, I appreciate that that's included, but it's termed as as an issue. And I think that you could just ask um, understands and addresses equity, diversity, and inclusion, rather than issues related to that, because I I think issues has part sign of a a a value to it.
Let me, let me ask you, um, James and Laura, would you be willing to have a look at this together and maybe come up with some changes that you would like to see? Like, I I I would feel comfortable doing that to the the rest of you. Feel good about that? Would that be possible?
Well, yeah, that that was gonna be my next question is with two minutes left, how's, what what mechanism can we put in place to make sure that what goes out um, is reviewed and then approved by the board? If Laura, if you have some time and if we're willing to, I would collaborate with you and you know, suggest the changes, and then we can socialize it with the board to make sure that everyone's okay with them.
When, what was the date this is going out again? When is it going live again?
Tonight.
Okay, so there's gonna have to be a very tight turnaround on that. And um, I don't know how, I I'm sorry, I should give you guys a chance to kinda um, go, go ahead, Brian.
I I have two questions on this. First of all, the, I I realize six o'clock was kind of the target, but our our posted meeting is at the conclusion of this one. So I think we need to invest the time on this if if we've got it on there. So um, just, you know, I I've heard six o'clock mentioned several times on it. Um, in regards to that, I'm fine with that. I just wanna give two suggestions with this. Talking about enrollments rather than enrollment growth and decline, just enrollment as a topic. And under number five, I'm sorry, under number four, um, I don't see anything talking about working with different um, employee groups as far as associations, different employees within the district um, as a leadership skill. So working with recognized groups with associations, somehow I'd like that phrased in there. We have a great tradition in this district as far as working with our different associations, which other urban districts may not have that same experience with, and I think it's definitely something that we need to see as a leadership choice.
And it's a priority here in our district, and it will, and it has, yeah, you're right, the tradition is there. I agree with you. Go ahead, Laura.
Thank you. I do have two questions aside from that. One was um, are, for example, in number five, we talk about the characteristics. Are these from a specific document or common um, reference, you know, that the wording varies, some for our characteristics, but then also um, like enthusiasm or, you know, things like that. But then it goes down to, and there's even like different font of different negotiator, peacemaker, visionary, advocator. You know, are these based on like a model, or it just kind of, they seem kind of different word patterns? And I was just wondering, that was my. Oh, sorry. So then my second question was that was just about the context for some of those, also with the significant strengths. Um, and then I think those were the, those were the two things, kind of, oh, the other one was about number six. Is there a rationale for the the imbalanced, kind of extremely important, important or not important? That there's, you know, not a a neutral or not a extremely unimportant, you know, it's kind of a, a, not a balanced um, scale. So those are some of my questions to help understand.
Um, I'm not an expert on our survey. It's a survey that our firm uses. It's usually used as a starting point. Um, it's um, i- i- it's based on educational research, obviously, when it was first put together. Could it be improved, made better? Absolutely. And we're not um, defensive about it at all. It's just hard to to get to a consensus in a big group, so.
This is, it'll be hard to do that amongst us. So that's why I was thinking if we have two people focus on it. But like I said, the turnaround will have to be fairly quick. So if you, do you think you guys could come up with an a a different option and then and then send it out to the rest of us so we can sign off on it, and then we can and 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 keep uh, uh, Joe in the, in the loop on that?
And just so that we don't get behind in the timeline, I don't know how much work it will be for our person to to restructure this. So if it can be in this format as much as possible, like splitting, um, as the one suggestion, splitting managerial and um, leadership qualities, that's fine. I think that would just, you know, be something she could add a section. But if you make too many structural changes, I'm not sure she can turn it around real quick.
Okay, I I don't know much about surveying either, so go ahead, Laura.
Respectfully, this document made me wonder about, I, I know you guys didn't do this, but I would bring that feedback that this is, I mean, survey one-on-one, this was really not a strong um, survey for this sort of level of professional organization. I would expect, I was actually, I looked at it last week, and I tried, started to type feedback, and I'm like, okay, let me look at this later. And I looked at it again today, and there's just um, a whole host of of issues from survey design, and I'm not a survey designer, but I've, I've done enough, and I've done um, employee-based surveys. And so there's some of the co-sign, some of the concerns, I put all in the document that I forwarded to maybe share with your person.
We're always looking to get better. So that's the way we get better when we get feedback from our clients. So we're not defensive about it. And um, I'm eager to see the suggestions that you make.
Okay. Go ahead.
Is this something also that we have a survey expert in the back that we'd be able to kind of give our feedback to and give it to Lori and just trust the communication between the two of? You know, we're, we're also putting our district's name on the survey to our, you know, i- if some, and I I share the same concerns with some of the formatting of it. I thought it was poorly done on it as far as some of the questioning, similar concerns that you said, just to get that reworked. I understand that you have staff and concern about having it reworked, but that's kind of what we're going with with your firm.
Sure. Yeah, okay, so we're gonna agree then that James and Laura are going to do a sub, like a subcommittee and and have a go at this um, with the thought that there is a tight, a fairly tight turnaround on this, and um, that the rest of us, I think, can maybe ha- have a look at it once you have something and um, and then sign off on it.
At Laura, I I just don't want to go and make sure that it's hurt. I I appreciate that we learn and get better. Um, so please let us not make it a habit and make sure that everyone understands that everyone around this table is responsible, and you're a representative of your firm, right? So I, to say that someone doesn't know it, or if you're bringing stuff that you're not familiar with to this board, that's what we're saying is unacceptable. So you know, the the. To this board, that's what we're saying is unacceptable, so you know, the, the, the work product quality. Does not meet our expectations, um, and um, Laura and I are willing to take this on to, because. To Brian's point, we will put our district um, reputation on the line, but it's not our job, right? So I'll just make sure that that feedback is heard as well.
Okay, all right, I think that we should um, probably move on then, so um. Is there anything else on this timeline that we need to address? Okay, um, then, I think that. I think we need to adjourn. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All right, we're adjourned, um, we're gonna take a five-minute break, um, and then we're gonna come back for our regular board meeting.
Board on the adjourning though.
Oh, sorry. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you, everyone, have a great evening.
All right, welcome everybody to our November twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Regular Board of Education meeting, um, I just want to welcome you all. Thanks for joining us tonight. We're joined by our interim superintendent, Vicky Byer. Um, members of her cabinet. And we also are joined by two intercity student council members. Would you please introduce yourselves?
My name is Macy Saha, I'm a pre- a senior at Preble, and I'm the president of Inter-City Student Council.
My name is Tatiana Kaktash, I am a freshman at Southwest, and I am a student representative.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Okay, uh, uh, do we need to do a roll call again? Okay, go ahead, let's do the roll call. Smith.
Here.
Becker.
Here.
McCoy, here. Leighton and Warren.
Here.
Welch, here. Lyerly.
Here.
Mills.
Here.
Okay, um, all board members are in attendance to virtually, um, would you all please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in his will, with the redeemed justice for all.
Okay, the next is our mission statement, Nancy.
We educate all students to be college, career and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you. And next we have our land acknowledgement statement, which I'll read. We, the members of the Green Bay area public school district, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works and learns upon the ancestral homelands. Of the Menominee and Ho-Chunk nations and the current homeland of Omnada Nation. We acknowledge the twelve diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here. Since before recorded time and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships. And stand with all First Nation communities. Okay, next on our agenda is the inner-city student council report.
Okay, so first we have um, good news from all the schools. At Preble, we had Friendsgiving, which was super fun. There's a lot of activities, we were selling pie and playing cahoots during the lunch hours. Um, intramural basketball is starting next week, Monday, and I know a lot of students are very excited for that. Our co-op traveled to New York, which is super cool, um, and we're also hosting a blood drive this December. Um, J-Doll is, their second term is coming to end, and they're sharing the projects that they've been working on all year. Um, I know they're super excited to share all the hard work that they've been doing, and then they also had Indigenous Celebration Event. And a native speaker came in, and then West, um, girls' basketball has their first game tonight, so good luck to them. Sting Cancer is hosting an art drive for the Chad Life Center at St. Vincent Hospital. They are also hosting a blood drive. Um, they have many cultural clubs that are having really good turnout, and the musical was announced as Shrek.
East NHS held a study-a-thon hosted gloves. Gloves-giving to collect gloves for those in need. The trimmest. Trimester, trimester ended, student council is collecting donations for Silent Night, I can't. Southwest presenting their musical, Bring It On, these upcoming weeks, hosting a craft fair. And then the band marched in the holiday parade. And then in December, they are hosting a blood drive, and also the Asian Club is hosting a fundraiser.
Okay. Good. Yes.
Could one of you explain Silent Night?
I actually am not sure what Silent Night is.
It's a big deal. It's a big event, go ahead.
Sure, Brian, you can explain it. Silent Night is a fantastic. Everything student council does is fantastic, so I don't want Preble and Southwest yelling at me for this. Silent Night is a fantastic event held between. East and West's basketball programs and student council where they have. The game is quiet until the first, until the tenth basket or eleventh point is scored, and then everyone cheers really, really loud. But the baskets that they were talking about goes towards helping our students uh, receiving McKinney-Vento services. And other opportunities for the um. Student council and just to raise funds, and I won a TV ad it like seven years ago, which then I donated to my kid's school.
That's why it's so special.
Yeah, it's, it's such a special event, but um, while we can't do an action event, item, if the board was interested in putting together a basket. As a donation thing, I would be more than happy to help organize that and give that to, um, it's at East this year, I believe. To the East people, so if you wanna reach out to me after.
Probably pull some together.
Okay.
I think that the students at East would really appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Thank you, guys. Um, all right, the next is um. The consent agenda approval. Oh, sorry. Is there anybody who'd like to speak with in our public forum? Nobody tonight? Okay. Now we will uh, address the consent agenda approval, and I believe Nancy, you're going to do the motion.
I move that the cons- consent agenda items as presented be approved.
Uh, point of order, here, we have to ask if anyone wants items to be taken off.
Does anyone want any items taken off?
Um, I'd like to remove G and H, um, based on their significance, I'm, I'm voting yes, but I think they need to deserve a separate vote.
I'll second.
Pretty sure it's one member's prerogative to take something off the consent agenda.
I take back my second.
Okay, we have a motion to remove the two items. But I don't think there's a second, okay, all right. So that motion fails.
Even negotiated why we even have one.
That's why I took it back, all right. Okay, so let's vote on the consent agenda, um, minus the two items.
I thought we don't need us.
Oh, got it, okay, I second the consent agenda, got it.
Okay, now we have a second.
You threw out, Brian.
Yep.
All right, go ahead, uh, are we gonna do uh, voice vote? Yeah, anybody else wanna talk about this? All right. Are we gonna do um, electronic voting or um, or a voice vote? We can do electronic, okay. Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you, um, then we are going to take up G, the Charter School Authorizer Report, um. There's no.
I'll move that, I move that the Charter School Authorizer Report be approved as presented.
Second. Kinsey?
Any question?
No. Questions or discussion? Go ahead. Little voice vote on these ones, okay. Smith?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Leighton Warren?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Okay, um, Andrew, do you wanna do H as well?
Sure, I'll move approval of the CISA seven contract as presented.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Kinsey? Mills?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Leighton and Warren?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries? Okay, thank you. Um, number five, under discussion, we have the reported canvassers, um. I don't think this is an action item, right? I think it's just a discussion, there's an attachment that shows um, the report from our city clerk. Go ahead, Brian.
I, I think this just goes to show with the breakdown, the phenomenal job that. Our district staff has done on showing the trust of our district and our, the voters to uh, support the referendum and that they're going to. Trust us to be good stewards of their money, and once again, just the good work that was done by our leadership team to get this message out. That's here and those that are not, so, once again, good job.
I did review this and um, today and um, noticed that there wasn't any words where the um, the referendum question. Was there just one? Okay, I missed that, yeah. Of all the words that, where the referendum um, didn't um. Have more votes, uh, passage, so um, I was, that was great, and it is a reflection on. The work of many people that um, that our community uh, was informed and went into the booth, informed and was able to um, take their vote. Okay, the next.
Fifty-eight per, you know, this, this high percentage is very significant, and the um. Ward, um, Ward one is a very, very small ward, so um. It's. As, it had eleven voters compared to others had uh, generally hundreds, so it's really a broad, um, very broad support for the. The referendum by the community.
I'm personally quite grateful. Um, okay, um, the next is uh, six, we have a, a number of votes, these um, these items have all been discussed in a prior meeting. We will have um, an opportunity to discuss them again tonight, but we're gonna move through them rather quickly, um. I would entertain a motion, we're gonna start um, A, Employee Assistant Program Recommendation, I would entertain a motion.
I move that Advocate Aurora be contracted as the district's Employee Assistance Program Service Provider, as presented, be approved.
Second. Discussion, questions? Kinsey?
I do have one item.
Go ahead, James.
Recognizing that this is um. This presentation, I, I agree with the, the outcome, um, I don't necessarily agree with the process that was. Um, was followed, uh, when we, we look at the number of vendors. That were considered, and then that there were, really wasn't a finalist. Oh, process, that we only contact, contacted one vendor, um, I, I'm. I was not, uh. I was disappointed that we have a process that's pretty well codified in uh, procedures. And um, it was not necessarily followed by the, the book, or we'd hope that. As we go forward, both the board and administration kind of enforce the policies that we have in place for the RP, and it may be that we have some latitude. In those policies, um, but um, uh, I saw that either. I, I know it may have been a no-brainer, but it looked like to me the decision was made on price, and if you don't contact. Both vendors and make it known that uh, you know, th- there's a mismatch in. In uh, proposals based on price and allow them to, to correct, feels like we're missing opportunities to be. Uh, transparent in our decision-making process.
Anything else? Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Okay, next we have B, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar. I would entertain a motion.
I move that the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school year calendar as presented be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion? Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Okay, next we have um, C, modify. The table of organization to change the executive assistant slash legal assistant to paralegal specialist. And associated job description, I would entertain a motion.
I move that the table of organization be modified to change the position of executive assistant, legal assistant. Twelve months, thirty-one, thirty-three per hour to the position of paralegal specialist, twelve months. Administrative salary group thirteen, six hundred, I'm sorry, sixty-six thousand eight hundred and seventeen. Through seventy-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-three, and that the associated job description as presented be approved.
Second. Discussion. Questions? Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. Next we have D, modify the table of organization to change the executive assistant to, and payroll. To payroll specialist and associated job description. Someone read the motion?
I move that the table of organization be modified to change the position of executive assistant and payroll, twelve months. Thirty-one, thirty-three dollars an hour to the position of payroll specialist, twelve months, administrative salary group thirteen. Sixty-six thousand eight hundred and seventeen to seventy-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars, and that the associated job description as presented be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion? Kinsey? Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor. Thank you. Next, modify the table of organization to change the safety and security coordi- coordinator to safety. And security manager and associated job description. Someone read the motion, please.
I move that the table of organization be modified to change the position of safety and security coordinator, twelve months. Administrative salary group thirteen, sixty-six. Administrative salary group 13, $66,817 to $77,693, to the position of safety and security manager, 12 months. Administrative salary group 12, $73,389 to $85,336, and that the associated job description, as presented, be approved.
Second. Discussion or questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is transfer of staff. Can someone read the motion?
I move that the transfers of staff, as presented, be approved.
Second. Discussion or questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Just wanna remind everybody again that these have all been discussed in a previous meeting and, um, and, and vetted and talked about, so, anyway. Uh, next, uh, G is Policy 672 Procurement and Purchasing. The motion?
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy 672 Procurement and Purchasing, as presented, be approved.
Second. Discussion or questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is H, is the rule for 672 Procurement Requirements and Methods. The motion?
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Rule 672 Procurement Requirements and Methods, as presented, be approved.
Second. Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is I, Policy 424 Full-Time Public School Open Enrollment. The motion?
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Policy 424 Full-Time Public School Open Enrollment, as presented, be approved.
Second. Questions? Brian?
I just wanna make a comment. I'm gonna abstain on this just because of my job and the way that impacts, um, students receiving services in other districts, so I plan on abstaining on this, and that's my reason why, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open.
Andrew, are you able to vote online?
Um, I'm having, I'll, um, I'll just verbally vote yes. It was locked up and I had, oh, there you go. There we go, okay. Now it should be in.
Yes, thank you. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. McCoy, yes. Leighton and Warren, yes. Welch, yes. Lyerly, yes, and Mills abstained.
Thank you. And for the last, um, vote tonight, um, J is Rule 424 Full-Time Public School Open Enrollment Procedures, Applications Submitted During Regular Open Enrollment Application Period. The motion?
I move that the revisions to Board of Education Rule 424 Full-Time Public School Open Enrollment Procedures, Applications Submitted During Regular Open Enrollment Application Period, as presented, be approved.
Second. Discussion or questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. McCoy, yes. Leighton and Warren, yes. Welch, yes. Lyerly, yes. Mills abstained.
Thank you. Um, that is the end of our agenda. We were going to, we're going to be, um, adjourning into closed session. With, um, Brian, would you go ahead and read that motion?
I move that the board convening to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851 A and F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations to it, for the purpose of holding hearings under Wisconsin Statute 120.13, Sections 1C and E3, and Wisconsin Statute 19.851C, to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over whom the board has jurisdiction, and Wisconsin Statute 19.851F, to consider financial, medical, social, or personal histories, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of persons referred to, specifically to discuss the employment status of employees.
Second. Do we have to take a, a roll call vote? Okay, Kinsey? Smith?
Aye.
Becker? Andrew, your sound is off.
Aye.
Thank you. McCoy?
Aye.
Leighton and Warren?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Lyerly?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned. You good? All right. This is the, uh, reconvening of the Board of Education, November 28th, 2022, um, to take a vote. Um. Can you, uh, Laura, can you please read the motion?
I move that the termination of Jeff DeBusch, as presented, be approved.
Second. Kinsey, um, discussion, questions? Kinsey?
McCoy?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Leighton and Warren?
Yes.
Lyerly?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, um, then I think I need to make a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school district's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.